Hey, let's go ahead and call a meeting to order at seven o'clock. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, in the resolve with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, the agenda is approved unanimously. Moving on to presentations, proclamations, and visitors. Do you have anyone signed up? Online, I think Ron's the only one online.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, moving on to number three, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda is approved unanimously. Moving on to number four, there are no public hearings this evening. Um, number five, old business, there is no old business. Moving on to number six, new business, um, I'm gonna say this name wrong. Our.
Aluvial.
Aluvial, Aluvial well siding and water rights study proposal, Matt?
Good evening, uh, Matt Etzel, Assistant Public Works Director. Uh, before you is a proposal from GSI Water Solutions. Um, this is a company that helped us a few years ago do a well siding study. Um, they kind of pointed us in the direction of Porter Moon Park and Mill Creek Park for a new city well. Um, it was, we were trying to kind of achieve some low hanging fruit possibly and try to find some water there. Um, wasn't as successful as what we wanted. Um, but they also kind of specialize in, um, developing wells and what we can do to try to maybe get more production out of that well. Um, so we got a proposal from them to do that work and also, um, part of their scope is going to be looking a little bit further and expanding their search for water for us. Um, since the well siding study was done in two thousand twenty-one, we got the Bishop Park, um, property. Um, we've looked at some of the well logs out there and there's, um, there's maybe some potential out there is, um, along with the interchange, um, development zone, there might be a possibility for a well out there. So we want them to do some more research and kind of point us in a, in a, in a direction to try to find some more water. It's, um, something that Ron's brought up. It's something that's been brought to council several times about the need to, for finding more production. Um, and so we thought this would be a good start. Um, they're also gonna look at, um, properties, uh, surrounding Almsville that the city could possibly purchase or purchase water rights from, um, a farmer or, or a big property, uh, in and around Almsville that we could transfer into our name and then, um, drill a well, um, someplace close to city facilities. Um, part of the struggle that we have is the Aluvial, um, aquifer is very shallow and the state requires us to seal the well a certain depth, which is right at that layer that we can pull water from. So it's, it's a kind of a really fine line. It's not as easy as just going and, and drilling until you find a really high production well, because where the high production is, is in the basalts and that's limited in our area. We're not able to, to, um, get any more water rights unless we purchase property that already have those kind of water rights assigned to it. So, um, they're gonna kind of try to give us an idea of, of what we can do with what we have and what's possibly around us. And then it'll help us make a decision. Do we need to look at maybe an intertie with another city? Or, um, is there something else that we can do to make sure that we have, uh, water supply for the city for, for the future?
Is this the same company that we used last time and they told us to dig here and they were wrong?
Yes, it's the same, same company, um.
Are there, are there not other companies available?
Um, these, this company, GSI, has been one that's been recommended to us by our city engineer. Um, we've, we've used them, um, a lot for, they did come through and clean up our water rights. We had a lot of water rights that were, um, approved, but they weren't finalized. So they were able to help us to, um, finalize a lot of those water rights. But, um, it's really a guessing game. I mean, it's, um, I hate to say that, but, um, then that's why we want to do this, this study is because we don't want to, you know, drill another well. We know all know how expensive that was the last time. We don't want to drill another well and, and, um, not have information behind it that says, hey, we, we tried our best. We did as much research as we could to try to find the most production. Um, so.
Have we ever had another bid from anybody else or has this been the only?
This is, this is the only one that we, that we got for this. Um, they did the, they did the well, the original well siding. And so we thought it was, they're basically just, they're gonna take that work that they did before. And now that they have some information from the well log, from the well that we did drill, they can see how that matches up with their previous, um, I guess inventory of our area and, and be able to tell us, um, I guess where to go next. The, the only issue I would say was possibly going with another, um, consultant would be, I would, I feel like that consultant would want to do all of that work again. Um, and I don't remember what that work in two thousand twenty-one cost, but I want to say it was around thirty to fifty thousand dollars of original work. So we would potentially have to pay that again, um, if we had another consultant do that.
They would want to possibly start all over again.
Right. Though, and there was, like I said, there's, there's a few things that we didn't know. Back in two thousand twenty-one, we didn't know about the Bishop Park, um, property, which is a potential site that the city could, to, could get some water from. Um, there's now some, a developer looking at the interchange development zone. So, you know, that's something that we can negotiate possibly with the developer is a, a section. If there's some water available there, we just, we didn't have them look at those areas because we didn't, we didn't see the potential, um, to go there.
Does anyone have any further questions? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the GSI proposal to update the October two thousand twenty-one Aluvial well citing evaluation and identification of existing water rights to meet municipal supply with a not exceed amount of sixteen thousand thirty-two dollars from the Water Improvement Fund zero two eight as presented by staff.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Moving on.
Thanks. I didn't want to make the motion because I don't want to murder the name like.
I think we're all on the same page.
That's all right. I could do it.
Moving on. I told you it was kind of hard to read. I'm glad it's not just me. Um, six B, O P R D Highburger Park contract, Ron?
Hi, council, uh, good evening tonight. Uh, this is, uh, actually one of those, uh, positive. Uh, and not that all of our actions aren't positive, but this one's a really positive one. We, we did, uh, receive a grant from ORPD this year for the, uh, Highburger Trail Project. Um, that project has been on our park, uh, master plan for a number of years. Uh, I think we've applied for, uh, this grant maybe three or four times and, and finally this year, uh, we were successful in getting it. Uh, it is, I don't have the report in front of me, but it's about a four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar total project. Uh, will include new bathrooms, um, some climbing equipment. We, um, depending on the budget, may even get a, a small playground area, uh, there at the, at the, um, Highburger Trail, uh, where the basketball courts are, it would sit just to the, to the west of that in that open space. We acquired that from the adjoining property owner about eight years ago. Uh, and, uh, I also believe there will be some, uh, possible exercise equipment along, uh, sections of the trail. Uh, so that's been part of our project. Um, the city would contribute around ninety-six thousand dollars of city match. We did budget, uh, in the, in the park fund for, uh, providing that matter. Um, and all we have to do is accept the contract that's printed, presented before you tonight and we'll get to work on that. Uh, bef- before we go any further, I do want to say that, um, Kirsty and, uh, Celia led this project. Uh, they did the presentation for ORPD, uh, did a fantastic job, um, with the project. And I think that's one of the reasons we were successful tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Do we, do we know who's gonna be building the bathroom or is that later?
Uh, we'll know that later. We did get some estimates from Blazer. Blazers Industries actually has a, a, a unique, um, kind of ready-made bathroom facility that they make in their, in their local facility. Uh, we've used the, the, uh, their bathrooms at, uh, Wildwood Park and we're real successful with those. Uh, uh, I'm not really sure, uh, how we're gonna proceed with the project. There's some things I have to do because the costs of those bathrooms are in excess of, um, what our contracting, um, limitations allow us to do. We may come back to council, uh, because we would really like to cite those locally. We may come back to council with an, with an action that might allow us to, um, separate this from our normal contracting restrictions. But we're still in the early stages of that.
They're expensive to build a bathroom. I mean, from my experience in construction, home remodeling, these numbers, they just look crazy high, but it's a grand's a big portion of it. It has to be prevailing wage. Looking at, I mean, even the fitness thing, thirty grand for outside and it's gonna be some pull-up bars or what is it? Outside fitness equipment, like.
There's quite a few different sections.
Yeah, I was a little shocked looking at these numbers. I'm like, oh my gosh, I mean, I could build a whole nother home.
Yeah, um, so.
You can't build it to commercial grade.
Right, that's where I'm, yeah.
And the liability that comes with it that they have to cover.
And I can answer some of those questions. So that's multiple pieces of equipment. That's not one piece of equipment. That's the budget for all the pieces of equipment. We did take those, um, we did have cost estimates to be able to provide those numbers to ORPD as part of our application. Um, and there is some in-kind, um, allowances in each of those. There's a budget breakdown in your packet that shows that.
I'm all for it. I was just kind of shocked by the numbers.
Welcome to city finances.
I'll be using those pull-up bars.
Uh, if there's no further questions, uh, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department Local Government Grant Agreement, LG two four dash zero two eight as presented by staff.
Second.
All those in favor?
Second. Aye. Aye.
Uh, motion passes unanimously. Uh, moving on to six C, Corn Festival, Corn Festival, Corn Festival, um, distribution agreements, Ron?
Yeah, so, uh, as council knows.
She's on a roll tonight.
I can't sleep tonight.
Okay, so as.
Giving away of money.
Yes, as council knows, we reorganized the corn festival a number of years ago. Um, and, uh, part of that reorganization was to encourage, uh, volunteerism through the various volunteer groups. And so how we reor- kind of arranged that was that the, um, volunteer groups would come forward and participate in corn festival and then, uh, we would turn around and award or redistribute some of the excess funds. And, um, and I'm happy to announce that this year, I think, uh, this is the highest amount, uh, that we have to award uh, thus far. So it was a really, really good year for us. Um, now the groups that vol- volunteer no expectation of dollar amounts. They're happy just to participate, uh, and, and to get some money. And to be honest with you, they would really struggle to, um, to be able to have fundraiserers to earn these types of money. So that they're, they're happy, however, council, divide money. Uh, this year we're proposing to divide the money in, uh, classification of groups. And of course, this is strictly up to council. This is just simply a proposal. Uh, and basically, uh, groups that participated with over one hundred hours were in one class. Uh, groups that were between like thirty and sixty or seventy hours were in another class. And then groups that were below twenty were in, were in another class. So we basically have three classes. Uh, and we just divided the money up, uh, based, based on those, uh, uh, groups. So it's not an hour for hour, uh, allocation. Um, but we also had about a hundred hours of just, um, community members that volunteered. And so we're also distributing that money back to the groups as well. What's not included in these numbers is those four dollars that we raised, uh, by hosting the circus this year. And council could allocate that money in addition to the corn festival proceeds. Uh, you don't necessarily have to do that tonight. You could do that at some point in the future or you could do it tonight. It would, it would be strictly up to you. And if you have any questions about how we've done this or our proposal, um, if you'd like to see something different, we're, we're happy to, uh, come back with those.
I did have questions last year and I think that this year it is perfect. I, I really liked the way that you put the thought and the distribution and this makes sense and it just kind of lays it all out.
Would you do the same for the circus or just the circus money or just divide by eight?
I would.
There's eight groups?
Well, I would, I would like to, to, to look at the possibility of giving that circus money, um, to the food bank. I think that's who's really addressing a real serious community need right now. Probably use the extra money. I don't know exactly other finances. I'm assuming that there's a high demand for a certain food product that they probably have to go buy it if they don't have it from the food banks.
I can give you a quick report if you'd like. We're averaging ninety-two families a month. Some months we have over a hundred and some months we have a little less, but that's the average. And in July, the ARPA money that the state legislature was giving Oregon Food Bank stopped. And they're scrambling to find donors again. And so we are very short on food right now. A couple of weeks ago, we almost weren't able to open. And then this community brought money and food in and we were able to.
Yeah, I've heard that. That's, I mean, that's just my, that's just my.
We also have the, um, the, the clothing.
Closet.
Uh, what is it called?
Clothing closet.
The clothing closet and the resource center right next to the school, which all, all really do help our community. So, um, I don't know if we just want to throw, like, think about it and put it on the agenda for next, for next meeting? If anyone else, I mean, if we want to move with, I mean, it's up to you guys.
I don't know. It seems like there's a lot of clothing resources out in the community and the food bank system that really is focused on helping our community. And that seems to be, uh, I mean, even families with good incomes are struggling right now to buy food.
Yeah.
This the Thursday food bank down here, is that the one?
Yeah, the second and fourth.
It used to be, it moved. It was down here, down at the old Pentecost, the yellow Pentecostal church. Now it's right here.
Oh, okay.
Technically it's separate because that one closed and we weren't able to open until January. So it's considered a new one. But a lot of the money that was donated last year went toward equipment and things that we had to have to open because there was nothing available from there. So we got gathered donations from different businesses and cash from community and businesses in order to get the things we needed to open. Now, and we had plenty of food back then because of the ARPA money. Now we're struggling to meet the food needs. So.
If you wanted to amend it and include it, I mean, you wouldn't make the amendment, um, under council options number two.
I mean, if that's, or we can do it separately, but I'm willing to make a motion if we, if we want.
Anybody else?
So I'll move to approve the corn festival proposed distribution agreement with local volunteers and service groups as amended by the addition of the circus money, four thousand dollars being added to.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to six D, Almsville Planning Commission reappointments, Ron?
I actually think Kirsty's gonna take this one since she's there in the, in the council chambers.
That's me. I'm not gonna get up. Uh, Kirsty Posito, Assistant City Administrator for the record. Uh, so the planning commission reappointments are coming up. They're each for two years for, for the terms, um, and they're typically staggered. So there's two on odd years and three on the even years. There's a little bit of the records are kind of confusing in our system. So we are, you know, sure of who's who, but it's not documented super well. So we would rather just have the motions made to reappoint everybody now. And then we would have their expirations, um, accordingly on here. So Chris Chitka would have a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Same with Jennifer Mullen and then Courtney Brennan and Molly Hatfield with a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. So then they would be reappointed next year. So, and that, that's pretty much it. And they are all, um, happy to, to continue in the planning commission. We did confirm that with them.
That still leaves a position open, right?
That's correct, yeah. Which we have been putting in the newsletter, um, and then I don't know if we've had it on the watch fire side, but I actually, I'll probably add it to that as well.
Their motion?
I don't really know any of these people. Does anybody? Is there any reason to not move forward?
I move to reappoint Chris Chitka and Jennifer Mullen to the Almsville Planning Commission effective January first, two thousand twenty-five with a term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
I move to reappoint Courtney Brennan and Molly Hatfield to the Almsville Planning Commission effective January first, twenty twenty-five and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Uh, moving on to city administrator report, Ron?
Okay, well, I'll try to run through this, uh, as quickly as possible, council. Uh, so council convened a, uh, um, I'm gonna say a mini retreat because we were just working on, uh, project goals for this year. Uh, and we came up with a, a number of those projects. I'm happy to say that we're well on our way to accomplishing all of those. Uh, one of the things that we did was we also, uh, were able to get a small grant from Civic Power Corporation to assist with the, uh, musical park equipment project. Um, and we do have money budgeted in the park fund as well. So that's a project we could, uh, go ahead and move forward. Um, uh, we could try to get some more grants to help, uh, buy down the cost of that, but it's a small project. I think it's something we could just go ahead and, uh, get installed and, and, uh, get completed unless council has objections to that. Um, we did budget fully for it. So the fact that we got, uh, any grants just helps, uh, buy down the project a little bit. Um, the new reservoir, I think you see that it's, it's almost complete. Uh, I think they're out doing some pressure testing, uh, leak testing, that kind of stuff for it. Uh, the mural is installed, uh, on there. And, uh, I noticed that our community's been providing lots of positive feedback for that. So I think that's just an affirmation that, uh, the work that we did through the visioning process, uh, really did hit a note of, of what our council or what our community, um, wanted to see. Because, um, you know, there, there's just been a lot of positive feedback on, on that project and the impact it, it will make in the community, not to mention the impact that it'll make into the system itself, um, which is obviously the primary reason for the project. Um, fall events have been going, uh, very well. Uh, the last event we have, I think for the year will be our series of Christmas events. And we are planning for those right now. So, um, if that's something that you want to be part of or have an interest in helping to develop, uh, the planning of that, please, uh, let her know and she'll send you out the invite for the, for the planning meetings. Um, you could also send emails in on things that you'd like to see. We're happy to incorporate that, uh, into our discussions. We do have a, a roof repair on, uh, one of our booster pump buildings, the, uh, I think the old, uh, building, I wasn't gonna bring that back to council because it's really more of a maintenance, uh, item. Uh, I don't know if we've got all the bids in right now. We think it's around ten or twelve thousand dollars. But, um, I just wanted council to be aware of it so that, that you knew we had that repair. Um, I like to build small contracts forward, uh, but I think this is something we're trying to get done before the weather, uh, turns too bad. Uh, and then I just wanted to let council know, we did finally get approval for our RFP, uh, to go out for S, uh, SBR equipment, um, which is the, uh, blowers and pumps and all of the mechanical portions of the wastewater, uh, facility. And we really need to have that equipment identified before we can complete the design. Um, we've gotten a little, little bit, um, because the approval processes have been really tied up, uh, with the various agencies, both at the local, state and federal level. And we have just been kind of trying to wade through that red tape. Um, the reason why the concern is we still got about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars unallocated of ARPA funds, uh, that we have listed in our grants and there's a time constraint to that, which is December thirty-first. So, uh, we're really pushing that time clock. And my guess is, is if everything works out the way we hope it'll work out, we will get some bids that we can award. And my guess is we'll probably have to have a special meeting, um, sometime between, uh, you know, mid-December and the end of the year. Uh, and, you know, it'll just be a meeting for this one item, but, uh, we'll need, we'll need to award that contract before the end of the year. Uh, it's unfortunate that we had to go through this, but a lot of the, a lot of the approval processes are having to go to Washington DC to the, to the federal level. Um, and, and, you know, it's about meeting all of those federal priorities and mandates. And they're, they're really watching things very close. Uh, and so because our project is one of the first, um, Oregon projects that was funded through, I think, some of the infrastructure money, even though this particular batch of funding is ARPA, uh, which is a different pool of money. It's, it's, uh, they're, they're kind of all under a magnifying glass to some extent. And I think if you have any questions, uh, Matt's there in the room and, and he's been kind of leading that effort with our city engineer and he could certainly, uh, speak to that a little bit more specific.
Yeah, um, so the timeline for the RFP is, uh, it was advertised last week. Um, the pre-qualifications are gonna be due the middle of November. And then December fourth will be the, um, proposal deadline. And that gives us like a week or two to score those proposals and select a manufacturer. And then like Ron said, probably gonna need to have that end of December meeting or some. And then, like Ron said, probably going to need to have that end of December meeting or some sort of special meeting at the end of December to approve those. Contracts and um allocate them to the ARPA funds. We were just really waiting on the USDA uh federal. Our our local people have been great. It's just. The federal have really um wanted to take a deep dive into everything and and so it's it's just delayed the process. But I think we're we're close. Like Ron said, it's going to be pushing it. We may have to have a special meeting or. That last meeting, which is a lot of times canceled in December because it's so close to Christmas, but. We don't want to miss out on the opportunity to allocate that that equipment and have it paid for through the ARPA funds. So.
And and I'm guessing we can even do a Zoom uh special meeting where everybody can just zoom in for this. Uh, we could probably do that, but we'll, once we get closer to that, we'll let council. So no, um, I certainly don't want to give any money back. And uh, and so I don't, I don't, I don't plan on letting this money go without a fight. So we're gonna.
We give money back, I quit.
Yeah, the other real struggle with with the ARPA money here is there's no one that we can talk to about it. We've. Reached out and like with the Marion County ARPA money, we have someone that we have regular meetings with that we communicate with like. On a monthly basis, and this one is like refer to the US Treasury. Um, manual. Yeah, and there's no one to talk to or no one to check and see if this what we're doing is okay, so.
And and keep in mind that politics is always uh hovering around a lot of this stuff that we do. There's a lot of rumors that this ARPA deadline will get pushed out after the election. I I think. Every, you know, nobody wants to make moves like that in the middle of an election uh cycle. So that's possible. They could get pushed out. Um, we have a number of other elements of the project. Uh, but again, they all had to go through the same process of being approved. And so. It wasn't like we could prioritize one or the other. They were, they were all going to follow the same timeline. So there really wasn't a lot we could do with it. But um, we're going to do everything we can. I don't, I don't plan on giving anything back, so. All right, the text my gov, we did a training on this the other day. Uh, uh Kirsty's. Leading that with Sam, the two of them are kind of tag teaming this. And I believe they're they're all, they're they're working on populating our local data right now. And then we can get that rolled out to the community. It's, it's a fairly popular program. A lot of cities have connected to text my gov. Um, I'm down at a finance conference right now and I've I've noticed a lot of the cities that are here are using it. So it's a, you know, it's a. It's a new communication tool and it it seems to be rather effective, so. Um, I did want to talk a little bit about FEMA, just uh I know uh. Uh, council just attended uh a League of Oregon Cities Conference and there was some discussion about. Uh, some new FEMA rules. Uh, and and you know, this isn't uncommon for uh federal programs to get kind of rolled out. Without a lot of discussions at the local level. Well, and that happened with these two FEMA rules. Uh, and really, it's 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 uh under the. Umbrella of protecting the Endangered Species Act or strengthening um some court cases that were decided related to the Endangered Species Act. But we got uh word from FEMA maybe a month ago and FEMA said. Oh, and by the way, the implementation date is December first. And so, uh, and what basically what FEMA is saying with with their their new program that is implemented December first is. Um, cities who are the permit authority for developing in floodplains. Um, will now either have to adopt model FEMA rules, which really are intended. To make it very difficult to develop in the floodplains. Um, or adopt a program that says you're not going to allow any development in the floodplains. Um, or you can take a third option, which is where you. Uh, can allow development on a permit by premise basis with um a number of restrictions. And um it took us a while to even figure out what did any of that mean? And then how would it impact us? The city does have a lot of floodplain area, both to the north and the south. So um these new rules do affect projects. Uh, one of the projects that it affects is our wastewater facility because there's no exemption for public facility. These, these new rules. And um, and again, the new rules are intended to make it. Very difficult, if not impossible. Um, basically, if we had to. Uh, apply these new rules to our wastewater facility, we would be scratching the whole project and starting over. And so this has been weighing heavily, um, taken a lot of attention of myself and and staff. But what we had decided to do was to process both an uh. Uh, site development review application and a floodplain uh development permit for the wastewater facility. Uh, for a couple of reasons. One, we know what the project is. We've done all the environmental NEPA reviews. Those have all been. Reviewed by both DEQ USDA. Um, I think at the state and federal level. And so we basically just want to grandfather our project in so we don't get caught up in whatever the end result of the new FEMA. Regulations will be. So we're fast tracking our own application, but it could have some serious repercussions to. Um, other development in the community. Um, and at some point have to decide. Uh, which of those three halves we're taking. Now, I do know that there is a lot of discussion from our governor. Uh, and our state representatives to FEMA. Um, uh, discussing both the program itself, the new rules. Rules and her implemented. Uh, there are some requirements about notices. There's requirements for the city about noticing any changes in land use regulations. And so FEMA wasn't, I apparently not aware if they were aware, they were indifferent to it. Um, but anytime that we adopt rules that basically limit the use of property. Um, we have to go through a major forty nine hearing. Um, it's a little bit of a larger process in Oregon than it might be. In other states. So I don't, I don't want to get into the too much of it because it's a very um. You know, lengthy conversation, but I just wanted to make you aware of it, let you know what we were doing to protect this project. And uh, and there's, there's more to come. We're, we certainly don't necessarily agree with. The positions of of the new FEMA rules necessarily, but I'm. Not sure exactly what power will have over that, but. Again, that's a lot of times that's the way some of these federal programs get rolled out. Um, how many questions?
My understanding is, um. If we. If, sorry, this, this gives me heartburn. Um. With the the FEMA regulations, if they went through the way they were and we had to completely start over, then we would. Probably have to give money back. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's why we're not doing that.
Yeah, and then we would be, we wouldn't meet our DEQ di- timelines, and so then we wouldn't be meeting the mandate.
Exactly.
Right.
Yeah. So uh, we did, we did uh do uh some research. Again, it's like every other fo- federal program. Nobody really has an answer for you. But um, uh, we did get word back that FEMA said anything that's implemented before the twelve or approved before the twelve one. Implementation deadline would be, you know. Grandfathered in, so to speak. And to be honest with you, our project, it's such a small element of it. Um, is uh affected by this uh by the floodplain, but it's a critical element. And and um, uh, the the part of the facility that would be in the floodplain. Plane is not in the floodplain. It's above the floodplain, but um. Uh, FEMA doesn't recognize that elevation difference, and that was one of the concerns that we had. It could be that if the new rules were implemented and we presented it, they would be. You know, fine with that, but we're not going to take the chance. So we've been, we've been stressing over getting. Getting um, you know, this done before uh it had an impact on the project. It's, it's always funny. These projects are never as straightforward as you think they are. There's always twists and turns and. Little challenges that kind of come out and bite you from, you know, nowhere. But I think we're navigating it while we're staying on top of it. And making sure we're aware of all of these new trends that are happening and how do we na- what's the best way to navigate our project through it? So.
What about the area that we're looking at for our new park? Is that, would that affect that?
No, I think there's some wetlands over there, but it's not in the FEMA floodplain. The FEMA floodplain. Is really uh the Beaver Creek. Area, so along Michael Way, uh, along where some of our industrial area is through. Where the wastewater facility is up in that north part. And then. The other part of the floodplain is on the south portion where um Mill Creek is. Most of that outside the city, but it does affect our affluent farm. Um, now, we don't have any plans to do anything at the affluent farm right now. That's uh construction related, so. It it certainly doesn't affect anything that's immediate, but in the future it could affect that, yeah. So um, if you guys want to know more about that, or if you're just intrigued, I'm happy to do a separate presentation at, you know, a future council meeting. Um, or you can just come to City Hall and I can, I can do that as well. Um, so we did check on this this time and we double checked. Our, our next council meeting does fall on Veterans Day, which is the eleventh. Um, and so uh I think what staff would be proposing is that we go ahead and cancel that meeting typically. Uh, we try to meet once in November and once in December. Um, and I, I think what we had preferred to do is to keep the November twenty fifth meeting. That is the Monday before Thanksgiving. Um, and you know, if something happens and there's not a lot on the agenda, we can. Cancel that, but I'm, I'm thinking that that meeting would be uh the best to keep. We could also do a special meeting and schedule one for Tuesday, the twelfth. If council uh so chooses to do that. Um, I'm not sure that we have anything critical, but. I just think the timing of the things that are popping up with our wastewater facility and some of these contracts. Um, are ones that are going to hit us more late in December. And so we'll probably end up having a special meeting um in December, but. Um, I do think the Veterans Day uh meeting, we could cancel if that was council's uh desire.
I'm okay with canceling the meeting on November eleventh for Veterans Day. Um, so and keep the November twenty fifth meeting? Yeah, okay. And then late December.
Typically, we, we cancel the second meeting in December and I. Um, we don't have to make that decision now. We can do that in November, but. I'm thinking we're going to end up doing a special meeting, maybe on the thirtieth or. In that timeframe to make sure we meet our deadline.
Only if we have birthday cake, because that's my birthday month.
We'll make sure we've got a cake for you, yes.
I want brownies.
Okay, so noted.
Um, okay. So we'll cancel the the November meeting for the eleventh and keep the twenty fifth.
Yes, and and then we can go from there. And then I just do want to touch on uh a couple of things. One is I have Kirsty and Sam. Um, I'm coming back from a training on Wednesday evening. Uh, Kirsty and Sam are going to do a training. On um permit processing. Uh, they've not really had a lot of training opportunities for processing. Um, land use permits. Uh, and this particular one is for um the paper trail, and that's one thing we've. Uh, not had a consistent process uh for over the years. I look back through some of the. Historical files and there's lots of files, but um they're not as 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 well maintained and organized. Just as um to be. So we're trying to, we're trying to get a really good process in line, and so they're going to go up on Friday. Um, and do that training. And then um. The council was just at the League of Oregon Cities Conference. We did, we were honored to receive the Good Governance. This award for the work that we've done with our community outreach. Um, and I think, I think it was, you know, this was a uh, we've put a lot of effort in to be in transparent. And to um. Uh, communicating with our community uh about these projects. And so I think it was well deserved. I do know Hometown, I think Hometown Paper is doing a, or my. Um.
Our town.
Our town, sorry. Our town is doing a uh article and uh we did, we did actually put something in the newsletter. Uh, as well, so um, good job. I know a lot of the council attended and that that was, I thought, I thought it was a great night for us, so. That's all I have, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I don't have any questions. I think it was a good conference this year.
Oh, I have one thing to add. Um, just in case anyone's interested in attending and doesn't get the invite. Uh, we are having the event planning meeting next Wednesday, which she's going to send an email out on Wednesday uh this week. Um, and it's going to be covering all the Christmas stuff. So if anyone who doesn't normally get that email, wants to start getting that email, let me know. I'll add you to the list.
On the fourth?
What's that?
Is that on the fourth? No, 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 that's in December, sorry. Uh.
It's November sixth.
November sixth, yeah, at ten thirty.
Yeah.
In here, in the morning.
Kirsty.
In the AM.
Yeah, Kirsty, if we don't have council on that list, we should just add all the council on that list.
Sure.
Is it, I just had a question. Is it possible to have some of those meetings later in the day? Because when it's in. And it's early, it really excludes a lot of people that are working. That would probably like attend.
There's a lot of staff that attend those meetings, and that's why they're in the, during the working day.
Well, and there's other agencies, the Fire District, um. The school. And. And if we, they, they wouldn't be able to.
You know.
That a zoomable meeting?
I was going to ask about that, Ron. Um, I remember when they were Zoom, I was able to attend more of them. Um, I don't know if that's a possibility.
This room is kind of a problem for Zoom.
Okay.
Be totally honest, with how big of a group it is, it makes it really hard because the mics don't catch. We've had this discussion. These mics aren't the best.
Yeah, because you have to be like talking right into them.
Into it. Um, so with a big group like that, it does make it kind of hard.
And Katie and I do attend them regularly because of other commitments as well as being on council, so.
Is it possible to have like a second follow-up meeting in the evening just to collect? Information or ideas from other people that can't attend during the day?
Um, you know, I mean, there's a couple of things that we could do. Uh. Uh, I mean, my preference would be we could maybe do a a uh. A call, uh, if a couple of council members wanted to attend during the workday. We could just have you call into our phone and put you on speaker. Um, and at least you could provide your input on those subjects. Um, again, uh. If you have any specific ideas about. These events, which will be what the agenda topic is, once you get the the agenda, you could. Um, you know, email us back, whatever those are, we'll discuss them. Uh, Christmas is a fairly straightforward. Uh. Series of events, everybody, everybody's kind of got their own little piece of that that they do, but. If you've got creative ideas, we're happy to incorporate those.
All right, if there isn't anything else, we can move on to mayor and counselor reports. Is there anything to report?
I attended the local public safety coordinating council. Not a whole lot of new stuff there, if anyone's. Let me know when I can go over some.
I've also attended the MWA. I've also attended the MWAAC and GATS meetings and we're in the process of ending one contract years and starting on twenty four or excuse me, twenty five through twenty nine. So we're getting lots of information from state and federal coming in. Now be meeting with us and starting to talk about what's gonna be available. So we'll know what, what to look for.
I missed the Marion County Reintegration Breakfast. It usually happens twice a year. Uh, I feel really bad about that. Um. Reintegration is something I, I believe in because when people leave the jail, they're coming back into their communities and it affects our livability. Um. Blazer had, and they got the announcement out late. I don't know if any of you guys were able to attend. They had their trunker, their trunk, truck.
Trunk or treat.
Thank you. Um, they had that on Friday and I was working, so I wasn't able to go. But um I hope people shut up. I tried to send out um to the schools and different service agencies, the announcement that they put out, so hopefully they had a good turnout.
Mayor, it was a, it was a good event. Uh, I think Walter was there. I was there. Uh, we did have our officer. One of our officers were there with one of our new cars and uh so we had a good city presence there.
Yeah. I did attend that reentry breakfast and it was really good. It was a really good chance to highlight some people that really have great work. Their own recovery and I think you can see those. But it was, it was a good breakfast, a good meeting.
Um, is there anything for good of the order? Uh, we have no correspondence in our packet. And if there isn't anything else, we can go ahead and adjourn the meeting at seven fifty two PM.